Madam Clerk, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have not had a submission in relation to item eight point one of the Act on rental and licensed rental units.
Is that all passed here?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Move by, uh, go ahead, Madam Clerk. First, I just, uh, in here.
Yes, that is it.
Okay, so right now, amendment to the, uh, so we do have a written submission from Al, at warrant, requesting licensing for rental units. We have motion to approve the, uh, the as amended. Move by, uh, second by Steve, all in favor? Jerry? Declarating any opposed? Are there any declarations of interest? Say none. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, uh, April twenty fifth, twenty sixteen. Any issues of minutes?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, uh, practically was talking to the last clerk earlier regarding the ability of the chair to vote or not.
This pass and the chair can vote.
The chair can vote in spite of if there's a tie or not.
The chair votes during subcommittee and standing committee. The chair has the ability to vote.
But that's not in my background on that, so we'll be fine.
Here with our standing in subcommittees, the chair is able to vote.
So we have what's called procedural bio, and in the procedural bio that spells out that the chair has, uh, an act of vote. It's not about just breaking the power, you know, you have to vote.
Relatedly, the mayor votes at council, when chairman council?
Question.
So in every committee context during this government, the chairman votes.
Okay, is that clarified? Uh, okay, then we have, uh, I still have, uh, more minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty seventeen. Need mover?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm just looking at the attendance, and, uh, having four, it looks like I counted thirteen, I don't know, fourteen on the subcommittee, something like that.
You haven't listened to the last one.
I don't listen. And I've read in this book.
Any manual order on my, uh?
I will make sure.
My ID. So we'll make the amendment, remember it wasn't signed there?
All right.
Thank you for your consent.
Can I ask one other question? You have certain motions that, and I'm not sure if this should just now or another issue, but we have certain motions, and we don't know when they're gonna come back. Start being directed to work alongside your internal subcommittee, gather research, incentive for evidence, or anything, is that something? Is there something, have a timeframe for some of these things to happen?
So what normally takes place in court and credit, we've hung on, uh, usually we have a chart that has, uh, outstanding issues and then dates for, uh, for reports to come back to the committee, and usually that's attached or fixed to the, uh, report. I don't see it here, so maybe, yeah.
Would you, uh, longer through that statement, is this supposed for our subcommittees, or will we do the track number, work with that, with track deadline? So it would be a question to staff, providing the timelines for these items.
It's not something we can get as a routine, won't you?
Yes, so, um, yes, so Erin, uh, good observation. I, I prefer that there are outstanding issues that you have need to report, then we actually have dates where we have reports to come forward. To me, that just seems, uh, part of, you know, good clerical, uh, work. Um, Paul?
Hi, I was just trying to speak to, uh, Mr. Chair, that, um, I brought forth a motion today that addresses some of the outstanding business items, uh, we may or should be contending with in some capacity at some point.
So we do, uh, potentially the motion, uh, that we can get some clarity and then maybe move rush at this step, that point.
Sure.
I would suggest we can do that then. Uh, but I do need mover for the minutes as taken. Uh, is there any other issues or questions, both minutes? Say none, any mover? By, uh, second by John, all in favor? So number, uh, six point one, public hearings, I got John Anderson and Mike Wood, Acorn Canada, respect for landlord licensing, approved on January thirtieth, twenty seventeen, went to our subcommittee, and we distributed. We have a delegation from, uh, Acorn Canada, please welcome Mike Wood and John Anderson. Uh, Mike is here. A reminder to our delegates, if you have five minutes for your presentation, any questions for our delegates, uh, will, uh, come out of your presentation. Uh, so we have a motion to, uh, we need a motion because only two minutes. So at this point, you can start your presentation, and you can take a seat at the end minute. Steve, that's open to you.
Yeah. I would like to first thank everyone in the community for having us here today. My name is Mike Wood, and I'm acting chair of Hamilton Acorn. Hamilton Acorn Canada is an independent national organization of low and moderate even families. We have over a hundred, two thousand members organized across Canada. I started Acorn in Hamilton because I was having problems in my apartment building. I heard that Toronto Acorn was pushing for more accountability from landlords through licensing system. I said, hey, that's something we definitely need here in Hamilton. Since then, I have been petitioning and holding meetings with tenants across the city, uh, at a church behind my apartment building, and today we held a rally outside of City Hall to show that we have a broad support for a proposal to length landlord licensing. Large landlords in the city of Hamilton with, uh, ten plus or more units, three stories or higher, to high-rise buildings. Because that kitchen cabinet is on the bottom hinge hanging off every time I open it, it's gonna break, and then they're gonna say it's my fault, even though I've notified. So these are the issues that are going on within the apartments, and, uh, to have a year of maintenance forms, copies of these forms, and you're, you're sitting here and you're asking yourself, why are they not being done? And the first answer a lot of these landlords come up with is, well, you can move, or we can transfer you to another building. But who's gonna cover the cost of the tenant's displacement moving to another building when I've just moved in there? Who's gonna cover the, you know, the, the issues going on within the apartment? And if I leave, that doesn't fix other tenants' issues within the building. When I moved in, I had a, no smoke detector in my apartment. I'm living in a high-rise building. I had to remind over and over again, can I please have a smoke detector in my apartment? For two weeks this happened, and finally they came to the door, handed it to me, and I installed it myself on the ladder.
But basically, you're asking for inspection by the city on a regular basis, then licensing. That's what you want, the regular inspection, annual inspection?
I want, I want an annual inspection that forces these things to be done within the rental units, because it shouldn't be that the tenant is got a constant reminder. It shouldn't be that the tenant should have to, you know, give their work order certificate with a, a envelope full. And I got petitions of almost over seven hundred signatures from residents in Hamilton that are saying they want landlord licensing. They understand, I've explained it to them, it states right here that they would proactively inspect the apartments, they've agreed and signed to these things.
Could I just get clarification, right now it's just questions on some of the...
Just questions, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I, uh, I have two questions, I hope that do this, uh, I'm not sure if I should be directing this question to you, sir, but I'm wondering if there's yourself or someone else here that can tell us if the city would have the same, uh, level of access to rental units, uh, if we do not have, um, licensing? Does the city have the same level of access to the inspections that, um, Erin was speaking about?
Yeah, they do, I can speak to them partially for you. Um, the, any fire inspector city Hamilton has the right of entry under the Urban Protection Act of international, uh, the actual physical nature of the building, uh, whether it be under a licensing protocol, under a registry, or a licensing process for these rental units, or just on a complaint basis, as we do now, uh, be no different for any difficulties or hurdles that we would face in that access.
So you have the same level of access for, for fire? Do you have the same level of access for other, other concerns? Fire law concerns?
Uh, my, my type is on deal with the, uh, fire, the fire scene issues.
I'm, I'm interested in, in that of course primarily, but secondarily, the, the other maintenance issues.
Can I just clarify, because I've already looked into this, and fires always have the, you know, we want to access, uh, a home, uh, for fire issues. Uh, it's been clarified through, uh, through the fire marshal that we only have access to that unit if it's an evidentiary issue. So if they have evidence that there's, uh, not compliance, they have automatic access. But if they don't, if they, if they don't have evidence, and, uh, and the tenant, the tenant let them in, they don't have access to get that evidence.
So then licensing allows the city to, gives the city more support to help the tenants who are struggling with these issues, is that correct? Okay. My, my other question, we, we heard about the twelve dollar, um, annual fee in Toronto, and some talk was, um, put forward of that being possibly transferred as a cost to tenants. So doing my math, even, even my non-math brain can do the math on that, that's one dollar per month, and I do go to Timmies like most of us, so that's less than the price of one small cup of coffee. Do you think that tenants would be willing, if they had to, to bear that egregious cost to have a much better, uh, living accommodation potentially?
Um, like I said, I, I don't know if they can actually put that cost onto a tenant as...
If they could. If they, if they, tenants would be willing to spend less than one small cup of coffee per month if this would allow the city to truly support tenants to have better living conditions?
I know definitely I would, and I know a few other tenants I've spoke to, some they would, but I don't know to a great extent how many would tend to that. Uh, again, it is explained on the top of the petition sheets exactly in detail what the petition is for, and people have, I've read it to them, they understood the sign. Um, it's, you know, the, the issue is getting out of hand, and it's being sort of targeted for a lot of people not to be able to see, and I think that's hidden from the city more than, more than everybody really realizes. Um, when it comes to your home, you should feel comfortable to live there, you should have safe and healthy home, and repairs should be made. I just don't understand why it is such a big issue. These corporate companies make millions of dollars. Uh, for example, I was just over at one eighty-one the other day, which is three land, they're one with displaces, three bedded apartments turned into one. I'm over there, and I'm, I'm door knocking, handing these flyers out for this rally today, and there's cockroaches, there's bedridden, running all over the hallway walls. When you assume you knock on the door, they just scatter, and the hallways are very dark and gloomy, and the paint's peeling off the doors. They may be outside the building, look really nice, sure, but that's how they're living, making tenants live. They're, they're leaving them to live in these situations. I don't know if anybody here would, uh, live in that kind of situation, I definitely wouldn't want to, and there's a lot of tenants in the city that are actually living in that situation. Um, I don't, I just, I just don't think that it's fair that they have to live in a situation like that and pay high rent. And sure, that people could turn around and say, well, they can move, but they're gonna move to another situation, it's gonna be the same, because there's a lot of places that are like that. Um, just one, like I said, one building on John Barton, I just did, the other day I went door knocking, there's graffiti all over the walls, there's, the fire exits are knocked, they're great, uh, railings are all in the stairwells, people can trip if there's a fire. Where's the exit signs? Why is they not lit up? They're supposed to be inspected. Uh, where I live currently, there's, there's not been no inspection this, in the last whole year on my smoke detector, to see if it's properly lit. I thought buildings are supposed to do these inspections on smoke detectors, apparently there's a lot that aren't, just to save cost. And then you end up with the issues of, uh, a big high-rise possibly currently being burned down, and, uh, you know, a lot of people can get hurt in those kind of situations, so...
Steve, was that, did I hear your question? Yes, sorry, Larry?
Um, so just to be clear, I think the park committee is focusing on three stories or fewer and six or fewer units, and Acorn's position is on the six units or more in ten and, uh, and the high-rise, right? So, so there's a differential, you, you, uh, and I'm, do you have concern whether it's, it's two units or ten units or more? Is Acorn specific to the, the higher density units, or the higher units?
Well, that's, we were just starting on a foundation base, and we know that this is a big issue, speaking with a lot of tenants, so we started here, as well as, we know you guys are currently working with the smaller things, but I think it's, it's good to get a foundation started somewhere, definitely. Um, it needs to be taken care of sooner than later, because there is a lot of issues, and we see it on the news all the time, with a lot of issues being made public. Uh, tenants are not getting their answers, and they feel like they're being left in the dark.
So have, have you seen, have you had much experience in the smaller units and seen similar conditions, or are these conditions unique to larger buildings?
Uh, the, sorry, wait, wait.
So you've been concentrating your efforts on, on the larger volume buildings?
Yes.
Have you had much time or experience in the smaller volume buildings, and do you know, or can you hypothesize as to whether or not the situations or the conditions are similar in the smaller units as the smaller number units than they are in the larger number unit buildings?
We, we find it to be the same, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a bad number, there's a lot of people with the same issues, um, all across the board with that.
So Acorn's concern would be all rental units in Hamilton as opposed to the, the larger volume units?
Yeah.
That reasonable set?
Yeah, I could, I could, uh, myself, I can say yes.
Is there any questions here? Go ahead, Doug, Paul, did I get mine?
So I have a question, uh, so, to your, Mr. Chair, just want to make clear, Acorn is funded by, eventually, the municipal...
Uh, we're independent.
Sorry?
We're independent.
Independent?
Yeah.
So your members pay that belong to your organization?
Yes.
And that's your full funding?
Yep.
I, I've looked at your materials as well, and I, I feel strongly, some of it's quite inflammatory, and I think you can understand that, it seems to only, it doesn't seem to be much effort to try to write this out, or relationship between landlords and tenants, and I, I appreciate what you've said so far, it sounds like you're in, you're in a situation that needs some attention for sure, but I am concerned about the material that you're handing out. The suggestion for rent strikes, of course, you understand, is illegal, and it connotes the Residential Times Act. Um, to me, your, your efforts would be better suited, as I think you've tried, uh, as mediators with property managers or firms, and try, in efforts to try to resolve things between parties, uh, but handing out the materials that I've worked at really don't do much towards healing the relationship. Uh, if you have, if you have issues with individual buildings, obviously, or landlords, et cetera, I certainly think that you need to deal with them on a case-by-case basis, which, again, you seem to be contending with to some degree, um, but not trying to create some type of expensive licensing program, uh, which we've mentioned already, you understand whether it's twelve dollars, five dollars, fifty dollars, there will definitely be an impact on the people that, uh, you're representing, and you understand that, and, and there is legal authority to pass that cost on, so I just wanna make sure you're clear.
Uh, and I appreciate everything you've said, and, uh, if that was the case, we'd be here today, if please, if, if we have done mediation with landlords, and they don't wanna listen, and we've found those approaches, and then that, that register that's going on in, in Toronto right now, uh, it forced mediation to happen, that was not happening before. It took that to get to that point.
But I guess my point I'm trying to make is, if you've got those individuals, I'm certainly not denying that they're out there, and the examples you've shown, I've seen myself, you can deal with them on a case-by-case basis without having everyone else in the industry pay for those particular individuals that choose not to listen to you. Correct?
I, well, there's a lot of, a lot of landlords that don't listen, and that's why a lot of people have signed this petition, because there's a huge issue with, with the landlords not listening. If that was the case, if landlords were listening, there wouldn't be any kind of debate over the fact of, uh, homes being inspected, making sure of repairs are being done. I, I honestly, I, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying, and I, I appreciate that, but at the same time, like I said, uh, if everything was perfect, you, none of us would be even here doing this. So I, I honestly think there is a huge problem, and it's being, and it is throughout the whole entire city.
And I do believe what you're trying to do, I, I think you're trying to do things without taking the legal route or additional fees and all that, and obviously, there are parties that are not cooperating with you, right?
That's why you're here doing this.
My, my problem with any additional fees or processes is you're asking those of us who hopefully do a better job in the industry to help pay for organizations or other people to enforce the people that are not doing things correctly, and I don't wanna have to subsidize anyone chasing any bad people if we're doing things correctly. That's, that's, my understanding is, and, and many colleagues who try to operate above board and try to operate in a group manner. So I'm saying, don't penalize us for you trying to chase down the corporations that are listening to you. Thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, uh, thank you for your, for your hesitation, I, I really enjoyed, um, your proposal. I, I'm a little bit, um, or I'm interested to hear, um, how you think that landlord licensing could improve relationships between tenants and tenants. You mentioned how, um, there's a perceived power imbalance in which, you know, tenants might, um, fear eviction if they bring up a, um, an issue to the city for an inspection on a complaint basis, so how do you think that a, a licensing system could overcome that and, at the end, improve relationships between tenants?
Well, because the, the way, the way, like you said, the tenants are fearing, so if this happens and it's more proactive, then they don't have to fear they're gonna be threatened to be evicted, they're reported, these things are being left to be not taken care of. Um, good landlords will, uh, you have a good name, they will be, it'll be that they were proactively inspected, things are done, and they will, that they have a healthy and safe home to rent to tenants, tenants will wanna rent from them. Uh, the ones that are bad landlords, who are not doing the things that they should be, will be further, um, forced to keep up with their properties and make sure things are being done correctly.
Okay, I, I have a number of questions, Madam Clerk, can you, uh, who's the next chair? I'll pass on to Doug Collins. New recommendations aiming to crack down on bad landlords and apartment buildings in the city were voted on Monday afternoon. Toronto's Licensing Standard Committee unanimously voted in favor of the bylaw draft, unanimous, which covers recommendations about pest management, tenant service requests, cleaning, leaving violation clients. Passed by council, the bylaw will come into effect live first in the city where we're conducting inspections through every rental building by the end of the year. Important distinction is that the bylaw only applies to owners, builders, operators, and tenants of residential property with three or more stories and ten or more equivalent units available for rent. Long-term campuses, retirement homes are not included in this definition. So wherever you, you are a tenant or landlord, here's what you need to know about proposed, uh, proposed rules. How quickly does my landlord have to respond to my service request? Lays out the, the conditions. What about treating cockroaches, mice, and bed, uh, bed bug infestations? It lays out conditions, seventy-two hours of being notified. Uh, do tenants have the right to know about infestations? Yes, and, and those are requirements that do not exist today. What about repairs of the building? Building operators and owners need to have a good repair capital plan that consists of a list of building elements and dates upon which they are scheduled to be replaced or updated. Capital elements include, but not be limited to, roof elevators, facade, windows, mechanical systems, underground grant, interior flooring, interior wall finish, balcony guards, and handrails. And it goes on, um, what else must tenants be notified about? Owners and operators must provide tenants with the following information using at least a notification order. And here they are. Information regarding major capital projects shall include nature, project operation, and project units, and a cleaning plan. Emergency contact information as described in Municipal Code Chapter six two nine five dash one, B C N D. Information regarding the nearest cooling location, including, one, the location of air-conditioned place in the building accessible to tenants, and, two, the name, address, and amount of location of public accessible air-conditioned location. All confirmed orders pursuant to Chapter six twenty-one, notices pursuant for, uh, to Chapter forty-five, graffiti, and notices of non-compliance pursuant to Chapter eight four, four ways, issued by the Municipal Licensing Standard Division that apply to common areas. End. Property status appeals relating to common areas of, of any. Date of M L S audit, of any, pod received, a notice from M S L, M L S. Any other documents required by the executive. How often do buildings have to be cleaned? Owners and owners have to inspect all common areas at least once a, a day for cleanliness. Eighteen city councils direct the owner or operator shall have a cleaning plan, and a cleaning plan consists of, A, a list of all accessible areas to tenants and the public, and the frequency at which these areas will be cleaned. The list shall include, but not be limited to, the following areas, garbage storage, walls, floors, laundry rooms, equipment present. How much will the implementing this bylaw cost? Of course, this is part of the, uh, the registration fee that was, uh, Mike had announced. The buildings allowed to rent unit, allowed to rent a unit while someone is pursuing property standards, ordered the answer to no. How much can my landlord be fined for violating this bylaw? Up to a hundred thousand dollars. What about the basement apartments, or some of the five basement apartments? So the reason why I'm highlighting, uh, these issues is because this goes far beyond what currently placed, uh, on our own property standards today. It conducts, it creates a predictability, it creates accountability, and it creates a transparency in regards to when tenants know that work is gonna be done. Now, some would argue that could we do it under the current system without, uh, taxing, uh, landlords for that, for that additional cost? So I'm gonna ask, uh, a question, I don't, uh, any of our staff can answer, prior to Toronto supporting this particular bylaw, did they not have, uh, bylaw officers, uh, someone like Hamilton reactive going in when they can, uh, on complaints? Any way to answer that? Staff?
Uh, yes, Toronto did have it, actually, when I was, um, had a meeting, uh, the manager from municipal law enforcement for the state of Toronto had given us some information on some reactive work that they were doing in a building in Jane Finch, and he was just kinda describing what they were going through, where there had, I think it was about eight hundred orders in the building, but it was a reactive, it wasn't a proactive, uh, effort that he had explained.
So it's much similar to our current situation here, and, and I think the challenge we have is cost, uh, who should bear the cost? R C S, for example, residential care facilities, they have to pay licensing fees, and, and those licensing fees are costly recovery for, for nurses to go in, uh, for, for, uh, fire to go in, for property standards people to go in to inspect on an analyzed basis or more if needed, to ensure that those, those places are, are up to par, and yet they're dealing with, uh, higher-risk individuals living in those particular buildings. So they have more, they are, they are bearing the cost. Those, those valuable services in our community are bearing the cost of those inspections. So the real question now is, who should bear the enhanced service to protect tenants in this community? Should it be the broader tax base, or should it be, uh, just like the R C S, the actual, uh, billing owners and landlords, uh, that provide, uh, the service that are being held to a higher level of account for the service they're providing? I think that's the fundamental question that's before, and what needs to resolve. I'm looking for a balanced approach, I'm not signing any dotted line here, but I wanna make sure that we understand the other side of this, this equation, and, and I, I think I'm articulating okay, Mike, in, in respect to, uh, far many, far too many tenants feel intimidated by, uh, by filing a complaint, uh, unreactive. Uh, the proactive would give them a greater, higher level of protection because it would be found through those proactive inspections, and the question would be, uh, the cost of that. What I'm not clear on is whether those costs in fact are passed on to the tenants, through the, uh, the rental, uh, rental board, and I'm, I'm sure we can get some clarification on. So I want just to highlight those things, and I think those are good things, uh, and I think it's, it merits a discussion in this community, uh, I think, uh, Ottawa's now looking at it as well. Uh, the fact that Toronto put it in place would suggest that, uh, not only did the staff recommend it, but the council unanimously endorsed it. Uh, so they obviously saw merit in providing higher level of service to the tenants in the community. So, uh, that's a way of background, so just putting that out there, um, and I hope you agree with most I've said. Um, and I think the real question now becomes, is the tenant that bears that cost, or should the landlord that bears the cost of that twelve dollars per unit? I don't know the answer to that question. Um, I, I'd like to get the answer, but that's only a result piece. So I think it has merit for discussion, um, and I just want to highlight. So I'll take the chair back, is there any other questions? Very good question.
Um, picking up on, on the point of both of you and Erin, it may, relative to the cost, and the cost incurred by the tenants relative to their occupancy costs and, and their taxation costs, does Toronto exclusively have a single tax rate for all of its residential buildings, or do they have a multi-res rate plus a single family rate? Can you know the answer to that?
Uh, at the moment, I don't know the answer.
Uh, at the moment, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so question, it has a multiple rate.
So, one of the concerns around the multi-res rate is calculating the tax per square foot and the mill rate associated with it and the costs associated with it. There's certainly a great deal of efficiency in a ten-story building relative to the degree of sewer cost or sewer lines, gas lines, all the, all the municipal costs associated with it, the cost of garbage collection, et cetera, that's handed off, that's more effective, yet the mill rate or the multiplier rate is higher. So we have tenants in a disproportionately higher tax weight, weight for their units, and yet we're looking here for another opportunity or, or a situation where their, their cost per square foot for municipal services, this would fall under municipal service, would continue to go up. That doesn't seem balanced. And I don't know what the answer is, but...
Well, just on that, so that Mike Segarik and Toha came in, the cost is looking at that rate, I think it's two point one, uh, seven, the mill rate compared to apartments, which pay higher than a single-family home per square foot, which is your argument?
Yes.
My understanding is being looked at, I believe it was capped, uh, to, uh, in Hamilton, so we couldn't, uh, we got challenged in their budget this year, we'll probably have a challenge next few years until that issue is actually resolved. Um, but what it really means is, uh, bring them back with a more equitable rate for tenants in regards to that mill rate. But that means that that burden has to be picked elsewhere, and that's the challenge, because that burden would be passed back on to the single-family homeowner, which could be significant over a number of, the next number of years. So that's the discussions taking place, we absolutely agree.
So, and, and, and just to be clear, it's my understanding, and this might correct me if I'm wrong, but new affordable housing units that are brought on screen and there are examples of those by, uh, Gochepper or other, other developers, uh, and private market developers, um, who have developed them, they have the ability, because they're charging lower than market rent, or there's some, there's a form of, where, where they're, where they're taxed at the single residential rate. Is that true in Hamilton? I know it's true in other municipalities, as part of a, as part of an incentive program to create affordable housing units, they have lowered the, the, the mill rate to a single rate for some developments? I don't know if that's true.
For, for new developments.
For new developments.
So, so there's an inequity of the same versus new, or essentially the same. Sorry, it's clear, that's not...
So, so I think we're, I mean, we're going around the same conversation relative to cost and, and underscoring the, those, the equitable distribution of it to ensure that it's safe and equitable, um, it, it does make the larger question of how do we find that balance? So that's my only question on, on the inequity of that narrative, that's...
Um, I just want clarification, are we still asking questions or are we in general discussion?
I think we sort of drift off, uh, some clarity here. So what I suggest is, and I probably, I should take responsibility, because I think I came out straight with a comment, uh, ready to get filled, but I want to provide the clarity of what was being asked, uh, through the paperwork that I received. Um, and that's actually, so I believe it's from Toronto Star that I got this from. Uh, so at this point, we are questions, if there's no more questions, we could, uh, receive, and then if we want to have any further, uh, discussion, have discussion that way. So any more questions for the presenter?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I guess my question will be to the, uh, property owners that's here and, uh, some others that have suggested for the last fifteen or twenty minutes, it's all about the cost. It isn't all about the cost. I, I, I'd like them to answer, if you think the safety of the citizens of this wonderful community has a dollar figure of it or not. Because you're putting people into situations that are unsafe, and I think that's wrong. And if you can live with it, that's fine, that's your conscience, not mine.
So now you're asking questions?
I'm asking, now, I'm asking the...
The question is, I'm just trying to answer. So, so right now we're asking questions directly to the presenter, so any questions? Yes, Mike?
Uh, Mike, uh, is AICORN looking at zoning issues when you're like in these areas? It's like we're struggling with here, it's, uh, places that are zoned for certain levels of intensity and, and, uh, people are, uh, if they're subject to licensing, might be told that they're living in a place that's a little bit, they're zoned for something else in that place. Is that something that Acorns aware of or thinking of?
Um, we weren't, we weren't looking around the small places like seven large, so, um, as far as I know, they're shown legally, uh, the apartments that I'm...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So I do motion to receive. Oh, so can you have a question? Go ahead.
Uh, I was wondering about, so today the motion is to, um, conduct the pilot projects in Ward one and eight, which are typically student residences, so I was wondering your opinion on, uh, pilot projecting in one and eight rather than wards that you were talking about in your presentation.
So you want me to know what I think of that situation?
Do you feel that a project should be in a different ward or a new set of, or citywide?
I think it should be citywide, um, because the issue is much bigger than just student housing.
Okay, so they got all the questions, so I do motion to receive. Uh, moved by Larry Second John, all in favor? Eric, thanks very much, Mike.
Thank you.
So, uh, at this point, uh, we can get into the comments and discussion, and then admit that there's a determination of, uh, what we need to do with this, uh, allocation request, we can write at that decision, I guess, to this dialogue. So who wants to open up the dialogue? Eric?
Okay, I've got a few things. Uh, one thing, I didn't get close to the rally outside, but I thought I heard somebody say rent is stacked, and I don't know whether other people heard that, but I find that very offensive. Um, it's sort of suggests that people should be able to just walk into your house and set up camp in your living room. Housing is a right, I agree with that, but it's not a right that they can just select a building and say, okay, I can live here and not pay rent. So we've got lots of issues there. Um, when we talk about costs, there was a new guideline increase in Waterloo that came to six percent above guideline based on taxes, licensing fees, and inspections that were associated with the licensing. So on a average unit, that might be sixty dollars a month or something like that, but that's a Waterloo order. Okay, their licensing fees are higher. For a ten-dollar licensing fee or a twelve-dollar or twenty-dollar licensing fee, it's unlikely that the landlord's going to get a lot of that increase, but I'll tell you what's going to happen. The other one, a duplex, chances are that next year, one or two people are going to move out of that living, and he's going to try and rent those one or two units at a rent high enough to cover inside cost of licensing. And don't kid yourself, there's going to be ten or twelve dollars, because when inspectors go in, there may be minor things, there may be major things, there may be safety things or just things that are, um, visual, but things will come up and work will have to be done in all units, so, or most units, not all units, but work will have to be done in a lot of units. So there's going to be those costs to the landlord, and the landlord is always going to be trying to recover these. Whenever the city of Hamilton does a budget, you add up all your things and then you try and cut away at it, and landlords will do the same thing. Here is a line item in the budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty licensing. Okay, what are we going to change to make this figure work, to get the bottom line that they need to justify continuing their investment? So there is a cost thing. I can't put a cost or a value on a person's life, but this issue is not about, how do I express this? It's a big issue, entire community needs to be involved in fixing these issues. The multi-residential tax rate, I divided it yesterday on the city of Hamilton's website, and it's almost two and a half times the residential rate. If you equalize that, tenants would get a rate reduction of about twelve percent. Just think twelve percent of the current rent out there, that's a hundred plus dollars a month. So tenants are already paying a hundred dollars a month in extra taxes. I understand that, you know, it would have to go somewhere else, it's a tough budget to pass down to the residential sector or the commercial sector, but tenants are already paying, like Larry said, they're paying a very heavy price for the services they get from the city. So it's not the time to be, you know, putting on, um, you know, more expenses onto that sector. These are the people who are going to the food banks, these are the people who are truly suffering. So we've got to keep that in mind always, the cost is relevant, and landlords have to make a profit unless you think rent is stacked, in which case I just, I can't, um, I've got no logical answer to something that says that. Um, yeah, the other suggestion, it has been made through what has been said and what's been written and so on, is suggesting that the city of Hamilton staff are not doing their job, because we have had reactive, um, inspections, proactive inspections based on our issue orders. I've been in the city of Hamilton, this industry, in thirty-two years now. I've had, in my mind, relatively few meetings with city staff, but I've found that they do do their job, they do go out and inspect your tenants' home, they have done proactive enforcement in my journeys. So to suggest that these buildings, ten units and more, um, are in current state, it's suggesting that either the city staff aren't doing their job, or I'm not sure what the, uh, suggestion there is, but, uh, there's obviously, um, ways that these things should be handled right now. And, uh, I, I don't know what to say about that. City staff do their job, and they are out there, and that is happening. Um, there's also one comment, cities been unable to get results, but when we've had staff reports, uh, they've said that they issued so many work orders and they almost all been complied with, and where they've young complied with, I believe there's further action that takes place. So, um, you know, I don't understand thinking that properties can't get fixed up without licensing in that sector. Now, maybe the duplex or the replacement apartment may get things, but in that multi-residential sector, there is an ability, staff know how to list, there is an ability to go in and do inspections. Okay, there is the ability to inspect every unit that they do put out, they go in, ask for tenants to, uh, phone in, they do knock on the doors, and if a cost tenant, do you have a problem? A lot of tenants don't want them in there, and that's something we would have to consider if we ever move forward. Should tenants have a right to refuse entry? Is there, is there an absolute right? To be want to give municipal inspectors a greater rate of entry than police officers, we've got a, 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 a,[1395.87]
I know you do, I mean, you have another topic. Go ahead. Steve, Mr. Swirrigan.
Yeah, thank you. We've, our committee has been underway, depending on what you have remarked on it for a couple of years. We don't seem to be any closer yet to providing an improvement for areas. And I'm kind of floundering around here in my thoughts, partly because I'm just continually reminding myself to breathe. Because when I hear the conditions that are described and the conditions that I have seen myself firsthand in our neighborhoods when I was involved in an endeavor that involved going door to door to houses and apartment buildings in our neighborhood in extensive effort during campaign with councilor. And I saw the conditions that are being described, I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. We went into some buildings where there's, there's a lump of powder at the front door. A line of white powder, what, what's that for? People are trying to beat head bugs from companies or there's been from other units. When I volunteered just a few years ago with city kids, I see little children getting on the bus with these bites. Beautiful little children. Down inside covered with bites. I go, what, what country am I in? And then I, I'm sorry, I have. And then I hear again and again, this, we, we bring up this thing about the cost. We've established that in Toronto, it's less than the cost of a small cup of coffee per month. What does that keep coming up for? These are people, when we got up this morning and when we got up every morning for the last two years and put our feet on the floor, what was our home like compared to their home? Really, I can't believe this. We've got to get on with this, folks. This is very real, excuse me, I'm still speaking. This is very real and it's critical for our neighbors to deserve a decent life, just the very same way we do.
Thank you for that, Larry.
This topic is so broad that we have morphed into many topical areas that we're beyond.
So to go on, right now we're having a discussion, particularly hall discussion on ten units or up as presented by Acorn. We do have a report from staff on what we've asked for in comparison to pilot program. So there's still other discussions and we are, we are moving forward in some of these other areas. So make it clear that this is just an introduction to the higher units that Acorn presented to us.
So specifically to the bedbug issue. I'm the co-chair of the bedbug action group of the city of Hamilton, co-chaired by the public health department addressing the issue around bedbugs. The complexity and the attempts to address or mitigate the experience or the exposure is multifaceted. There are a number of attempts to address it. Whether, whether diaphragm is earth across, across the stairway or across the doorwell is the most effective way to address with that. Licensing is not going to address bedbugs. It's a separate issue. I'm ready to come to the feedback and make sure that we're doing all we can in that group. It's a pretty diverse group to participate, but we're going to lose sight of what we're trying to accomplish when we try and. We've got to fix all of it. That specific matter isn't going to be resolved through, and I'm not trying to dismiss it. I'm really not trying to dismiss it, but a significant amount of energy, as does our organization and lots of other people, to attempt to address it. But we've got, you know, to keep an eye on what we're trying to accomplish. Yeah, they shouldn't be there, we can tell them to go away, they won't go away. We can only manage the problem, we can't, we can't eliminate it. And there's been significant inroads made in, in addressing of it. Again, it's a separate issue on how to. If there's a way to weave it into this conversation with, with a true outcome, that'd be great. The city puts, you know, puts resources into it to address it, as do a number of other participants, including landlords, including the tenants, including community offices.
Right.
Yeah. I, what the presentation has kind of highlighted for me more than anything was the need for citywide implementation. And the conversation has been largely on what I made and what's to show me that this is a citywide problem. Two is that I noticed like around the table, defensiveness. And it's understandable that if you're a landlord who, who does their job and is diligent, we appreciate that as tenants. However, the vast majority of landlords are not here and the landlords who we have problems with, who are absent, who don't do their jobs, don't come to these types of meetings and they don't represent themselves. And so there's a biased perspective of landlords at the table. And we as tenants, like I have personally rented four, like four different apartments because I have been forced to move out because of bad living conditions for four years. And frankly, what it's done is we may not want to stay beyond my grantation. Of course, my dedication to the city is different than that, but bad experiences with houses have made me want to leave. And those landlords don't come to these meetings, they're not here representing themselves. And so we don't hear that side of the story. And so instead we have good landlords at the table who offer a different perspective, but I think the reality is that we find that you're not landlord each.
John and Michael.
I'd like to clarify something. I, I believe the tax overage of apartments versus single-family homes, I believe it's two point four seven.
And this is important.
So it is the default. I believe that there is legislation that will expire. Relatively close, maybe year nineteen, when that will expire in, you know, June, December. And I thought I would have not statued it and clarified that. So there's, there's a window there. I'm concerned about the inflammatory talk from the Acorn. I happen to be in a, in a building, one of the majors, that's treated very, very well. You treat the building personnel well, they'll come to you. The twelve dollars regarding Toronto, there was some comment that this was only for common areas. Can that be clarified? Because obviously it may be more, but whatever, whatever the hand it is, probably could be worse. And, and yes, I'm sure that if it's sold to the residents, that whatever the cost might be, you know, you know, let's have it, let's call fifty-fifty, whatever the situation might be. But if the, if the residents have got a part of it, if they're putting money into it, whether, whether it's the, the, this cost or some item they buy at the store. If they've got, if they put money into it, then they'll care about it. They'll take care of it and they'll make sure that the rules are followed.
Thank you, I think what the best I can find in George's word notice is that tenant complaints and most things are inspected according to the law. And, and compliance orders have to be posted on the notification boards. So there's transparency that these complaints are filed.
But the twelve dollars may or may not be in numbers. If it's, you know, if it's, there was some comment about common areas.
Yeah, that's what Aaron was saying, but when I look at that, tenant complaints and the inspector investigates, puts a compliance and that compliance goes against the landlord, that's posted on the notification board. And inspection is part of that twelve dollar fee.
The, there's not going to be a routine inspection of all units. That's, they wouldn't be able to do with ten, twelve dollars a city unit. That will be significantly higher. So Toronto's by law will not inspect every unit, that is my understanding of it, if we want every unit inspected. And the other thing I've got to point out, city, don't mind, is that Toronto made sure their fees are low enough so that they don't trigger a budget increase and they plan to step them up over the years to make sure they don't trigger a budget increase. But still, they will get up to much higher.
So if it's proactive into the building, they can interact with the tenants in this building if our issues that we identified. And I think it's just a higher level service and obviously Toronto stopped that way, they wouldn't have implemented it.
Could I draw a follow-up to Aaron? In our particular building, one of the majors, we have inspections and it may be a cover, but we have inspections for, you know, possible water damage. We have inspections for the, for fire twice a year. We have inspections for various reasons. And it may be that the, that the landlord is using it as a way of entry. And but it's done in a way that is not objectionable. I can say, you know, there's a method of working with, you know, with the better, the better landlords.
That's a landlord inspection, not a municipal inspection.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're talking right now in response to Mike's presentation right now about ten minutes of the pod. And I just want to say that I support that. Steve, you were fine, there isn't a zoning issue there. And I can tell you, Aaron, that I've been in places that are high rises and they have been hauling. Somebody will describe some other places. But I also want to say to you, Aaron, specifically, that I very much appreciate a meeting with you and working with this committee with you. And I wanted to make sure that people in the forum hear that because one of the things that we've achieved and Paul we've been in this on too is that I've heard both of you guys, remember saying that, would say that health and safety is part of it. That's something that you guys buy into yourself. And Aaron, you're saying, look, inspections, you do the inspections, isn't that what you really want? And I heard Mike down there saying, yeah, we want, you want a health and safety, you want decent places to live in. And I heard Council Wyden saying, you know, maybe what that requires is some kind of legal foundation to allow that entry. Otherwise, we're relying on people like John's type, they're good, they inspect, if they're not good, they're not going in. So that's, that's the high rise. Now, the other thing I want to comment upon was the, the level of anxiety and passion. And Aaron, you heard something which you detested, which is that rent is theft. And, and I've heard the opposite, you know what? I'm a landlord and I'm not getting any money, my, my tenants are stealing from me, they're, you know, they're taking advantage of me. And Paul, I heard you say something which I've written down and, and I want to respond, which is saying like, I, I don't have to subsidize people chasing bad money, why should I have to do that? I'm doing my job, I'm doing my job. And I wrote it down, I thought, there's something, I understand about that, there's something not quite right. And, and I'm thinking, whose responsibility is it? So Council Wyden is saying, you know, in some cases, there's such a character that always bear the burden of policing, if you like. And others, it's broader. And I was thinking, yeah, you know, if I took a broader attitude to this and say, I don't want to have to play for, I don't want to have to pay for police courts because frankly, I haven't come to Congress. I don't want that, which see why I should have to pay for that. But I think we'd all agree, Paul, you would too, so we all share that. And when I think about landlords and tenants, now I'm a lawyer and I usually represent tenants. So I'm afraid it is kind of a lesson that most of the time. It's one of the reasons why I'm on this thing is that I like to get out of that, whenever I can. And in that case, it's about seeing that, that there, that it's not just a tenant. You're not always a landlord, you're not always a tenant. Some people who are tenants become landlords, some people who are landlords become tenants. At some point, Ryan, has been a tenant, you might be a landlord one day. We have a collective responsibility for the tenancies in the community. I think for the tenant, tenant above certainly, that's the tax base, that's the broader base, it's the social interest, that's where it should be coming from. So I know this, this is really touchy and I've been doing this for decades too, Aaron. And I want to say that I'm always concerned working in a legal client because there are a lot of people with a lot of anger who look to me and say, give us a solution, Mike, take us to landlord tenant board, give us justice. And you heard Brendan outside, who's one of our lawyers, saying, we can't always deliver that. Not because we aren't trying, but because the system doesn't allow for it. Can you imagine you landlords going to landlord tenant board and you can't pick someone, even though you approve them, but they don't pay the rent? You'd be up in arms. But where do you go to get the evidence that the landlord is on the title of property? Oh, you can take a photograph, you can swear on the Bible, whatever it is that you believe in. But you often need the evidence that all the city inspectors provide. You can't hire one, you don't have the money, and even if you did, they'd be working for you. Wouldn't have the objective foundation. So a lot of pressure comes back to the city, but well, are they inspecting? Yeah, we have great people at the city, I've worked with many of them, I've recognized faces around the table and they're all individually committed. They are always the first to say, we're doing the best we can. And individually, they do achieve results, but they will also say, we can't cover the whole city. None of them have got the present time. So I think that Toronto was, must be commended for trying to get, I think all these things inspected before the end of the year, I heard. That's a big city, by the end of the year, God bless them, hopefully can do it, but I've heard a whole lot of that. I think what they might have to do is go on a rolling scale. Maybe one day this city will embrace the same idea, which is specifics of compliance, go on three years and you get, you work your way through all the pitfalls in the city. It's doable, you might not have to increase the staff numbers as much as, as otherwise. And frankly, that would be an improvement, a potential improvement. Listen, when I joined this committee, I was kind of hoping that you guys would come and talk about all these other tenancies. We're focusing right now on, frankly, a niche of housing, which worries me because some of those people who are living in six units and under, they can't afford the ten unit places anymore. They can't afford a single unit, like a one-bedroom, maybe not a bachelor, they're sharing accommodation, they're living rooming houses. Those people might be living in places that are illegal right now, not just because they're unsafe, because of the zoning. There's some people who could be living in places that are okay, but right now the zoning won't prevent them. So this is a, this is, just so you guys know, this is the, this is the struggle of this particular committee and I personally am wrestling with this. Well, for that, it's a little displacement, I think, too. I mean, you mentioned this upfront, that's a concern for us. But I'm glad you guys came, I think that opens a lot of eyes around the table and hopefully it's going to give us a further conversation.
Thank you. I don't have any of the speakers up, I don't have to check you. I also want to make a comment for coming forward. And I think as a society that is moving forward, you know, it's nice to leave, but it doesn't mean it's back to follow good regimes, good practices, best practices in other jurisdictions. You know, when we look at the bylaw dealing with, you know, ten units or less, we're looking at St. Catherine, Tosh, or Peterborough, there's a number of successful cities. And I don't think we want to jam anything down anyone's throat around this, this board that we're well informed of all the implications and making a formal decision on what that license, if it is a licensing machine, what that would like look, like to ensure that we mitigate or address those sensitivities and concerns. So this is about, about writing something about that. This is about doing a thorough investigation, looking at practices to come up with a made handle for solution. But doesn't mean we can't learn from ours. So one of the things I talked about with staff several weeks ago now, and I would have to be asking them to, at Toronto, be one of them, is that we would set up a working group. And we, in that working group, I would ask staff to identify the social represent, you know, social housing representatives in those communities so that we understand the impact of displacement if there isn't. Or if it's, if it's more of a myth and it is a fear monger, you know, our own staff will tell you that we can exercise what we can and to date, there hasn't been displacement. But I think we need to put that in, if that's a truth or a fact. And we learned that from other jurisdictions who have had that displaced for a number of years. I think even on the Acorn piece, primarily, we're looking at the, this ten units and under doesn't mean for goal responsibility ensuring that all tenants across the city have a level of, of, a standard quality of life. So it doesn't mean that we, part of our investigation, we can take a look at, and talk to other councillors, social activists in Toronto, real estate people in Toronto and understand the true impacts of such a move. So that we're not fear mongering, we're actually dealing with demonstrated impacts on all stakeholders where these things have been implemented. Then when we come back to this committee, being better informed about those issues, then I think we can have a better, a more constructive dialogue on how we implement, for example, the, the pilot program. And somebody asked, why the pilot program? Well, the problem is scoring citywide, it's very costly. And if it fails, you just have very costly pilot program citywide. So we thought we'd take small steps and do it, and even though there are, and I would say in my words, not just student housing, I mean, I have a lot of housing that's just a high-risk housing that's been rented out to, more rented by the night, by the day, by the week, to individuals, not to students. And we will be on that. We have, you know, there's illegal duplexes, triplexes, which is similar to some of the issues in our city. So we, we are just encircling the Mohawk area, which is very narrow in regards to the issue. We're doing the whole ward, which is fifty-five thousand people, so it's much broader than the Mohawk precinct. We're doing all of it at one, so it's not just the McMaster precinct that gets captured into that, out of that experience. So it was about our capacity, our financial capacity to, to move forward, learn and move on, and then implement about citywide. So we'll start taking small steps before taking large steps. But it's certainly an attempt that we eventually, hopefully, my view, have a plan that provides a higher quality for all tenants across the city of Hamilton. So this was a full discussion. I, at this point, would just suggest that we received it. I'm going to sort of table any, table any further discussion on the ten units or up because I don't want, if I receive it, that means there's no action. I don't want to say there's not going to be any action because I think we need further investigation. So I'm going to suggest that we table moving forward on ten units or up and embark on a feasibility with staff to take a look at that working group we're getting that experience and bringing about. Does that make sense, staff, is that okay? So basically, if that feasibility, we'll incorporate that into the balance of what we're doing anyway. So we're not leaving it out, it's now incorporated in broader investigation and research. Can we do that?
Yes.
And we'll make that part, so when we have the working group, the working group, we can also look at those high, the ten units or up and look at those implications as well. We'll be interviewing, you know, all the stakeholders that are impacted by what's in place in Toronto, as well as maybe Osho, Peter, but we're going to have to rely on you to identify what you think would be the best model for cities to look at and then try and set up, to make sure that we have a roundtable discussion in those communities with the social activists, the housing activists, the, the real estate, the real estate board or the department association that have, and so far, so we have. The counterpart's there so we can ask those, those questions and understand the true implications. Okay? So thank you again and it's not dead.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
So at this point, so I'm moving it, because I have not had the chair, you're at the chair now, maybe second, second by Mike. All those in favor?
Table, can you just repeat?
Well, it's a table with a direction to staff to look at the feasibility and incorporate it into our research. But the working group, we haven't set up a working group yet, that's going to make a difference. So it's a little bit ahead, a little bit ahead.
Call in favor?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, is there a timeframe when we're looking at?
Yes, well, we haven't moved the working group yet. So when we have discussions on the other matter, then hopefully we'll move the, the working group and then define a timeframe for that working group to go visit those cities and have those discussions. And that time, we'll have a timeline to them. Okay? So now we have discussion eight point one, licensing of rental units. Staff, we're here to speak to this report. Staff, eight point one.
This report was put together on the basis of our prior meetings in terms of coming up with the plan for the framework of municipality comparison for the two, the previous discussions. So with this, it would be the project manager for six months to work on the municipality comparison, the framework, and the movement towards the pilot. So the preparation for the pilot, the work that needs to be done to include the stakeholders, the consultation, if there's a potential road trip that would be there and outlining every, what other municipalities. every, what other municipalities are doing, whether large or small, and again, as you mentioned, the ten units and more also could be included in that scope. Questions?
Any discussion? Yes, correct.
So this is specifically to look at for pilot project, or where you want to be for ten units or more? Is that specific, or is it for all the way to ten units? Is that what we are hoping to prepare for?
No. Well, at this time, if you have options, I'm open, we're open. The discussions were really, previously the discussions were focused on six units. Now that we've opened it up to ten or more, we can look at what other municipalities are doing at any scope, from small to large, but of course, whatever you have as options, we can take that into consideration as a part of the preparation of the framework and the comparisons. Any comments?
Yeah, so my concern is that if we are trying to make this impactful in Ward One, what we have in Ward One is many single-unit homes, which rent out multiple units, sometimes illegally. So by limiting the number, or like putting a minimum on the number of units, we might be missing the mark and not making the product as impactful as possible. So if we were to go ahead with that, the number of units looked at in Ward One would be very small if we did put a minimum on the, like, on the unit number. So I would recommend that it would be sort of all encompassing for rental housing.
So I, and I think the point is, is that they, sort of my word, I might have eight units in a single-family home, where in some places in Western, you can have size twenty units, which would be outside that six-unit threshold. So if we define ten units, you might miss some of those other buildings that we're trying to capture, so be pointful for them. So what would staff suggest, could we bend that then?
Absolutely. Unless there's any other comments, anyone else would like to add to that as well?
So could we suggest twenty units of a single family, or a single housing unit?
Absolutely.
Because I think there is still a distinction in zoning as a single family, or single housing unit, correct?
Yes.
So we can define it that way.
Okay.
So this will be up to that amount?
Correct. And that still separates it from a multi- dwelling?
I think some of the issue that is with homes that have been split up to, and they're renting out individual rooms, four, five, six, ten rooms within a house. So in my mind, that should be already covered under our rooming house by law, so I think we need to get some information as to how that operates, and if there are problems with properties that should be licensed under the rooming house by law, and they're not wanting to do that, then I don't know whether bringing in another bylaw, they're going to comply with that one either. We need to figure out what the situation is.
So the issue is evidentiary. So the problem is, and I know that Brian and I have had many discussions, and I've been saying with David, is that if we can get into a common area and determine it's a boarding house, we'll charge them on the zoning act. The problem is, is we can't get the evidence to do so until it's too late and then there's an incident. So the challenge is, they can factor right, some of them are clearly boarding house, they've got individual locks in each and every room, and probably under each individual leases, they're definitely boarding house, but we can't get the evidence that it is without the access into those buildings. With licensing, it gives us access to the building to get the evidence to determine that.
And that's something for people who will get the license or that would operate as a...
They'll be required to have a license, and if they don't have a license...
Or required to have a rooming house license.
Well, no, but renting a unit is not our group. It's a little different than a boarding house, and we would fire them, and they would have to dispose that, or maybe pay the price in advance. So the licensing regime is very easy to enforce, for units. It's the boarding house thing, because we have to get inside to prove it.
The primary concern I've heard around the tables, comparing cash and weddings, is the health and safety issues. As long as the underpinnings of these conversations are relevant to the health and safety of the tenants, to ensure that they have safe and viable living accommodations, the implications on multi-risk tax or cost, and all that, those are conversations for us to have around this table, but the conversation to have in at the unit, at the door, is to say, you're going to do better if you participate in this because your health and safety is less adverse. That becomes, if we maintain that as the cornerstone of this conversation, it gains traction with both willing landlords, unwilling landlords, willing tenants and unwilling tenants. So somehow, we need to ensure that that weaves its way through these conversations continually, because the shiny things that distract us are very shiny, run down the road of it's a rooming house, it's a slighrooming house, they have a shared collective tenancy agreement, there's one, one A E, there's a whole lot of ways we get distracted in it, but we remain through to the issue of violence, and the majority of what's here on this table is to ensure that this is good for tenants. So I just want to make sure that, how we weave that in there, I don't know.
Well, I think we might have some disagreement, because you suggest that a ten-year, a ten-unit house in a, in a single-family neighborhood, at eighty percent is a good balance of safety and quality of life for that neighborhood? Then you and I are on the same page.
The broader issue relative to...
Parking, all the issues that come with that kind of intensification in a small neighborhood that we never meant to have that, has significant impacts on the quality of life in that neighborhood. So these would be a balance in those neighborhoods, and if there are boarding houses that have a lot more units than is permitted under the bylaw, then they shouldn't be doing the housing, then the bylaws, the bylaw itself speaks for itself.
Mr. Green, the challenge is to knock on the door, individuals living there have a choice to make, they let you in or not let you in. If there's nothing added for them, they're not letting in. How do we ensure that this approach is such that the tenant sees value in it, so that they want to participate? Acorn's concern is, they have no issue around health and safety. I support that, I support how we can achieve that. Issues around land use planning, that's a whole other topic, which may or may not get captured in here, but that's probably a phase two conversation relative to some of the specifics of getting tenant engagement. If identified, many have, if the tenant says, you're not coming in, they're not coming in, we're never going to get that information, we'll never get the evidentiary process to allow us to address it. So how do we ensure that that becomes the first part of the conversation? It will lead to a longer conversation going into the land use planning, relative to density issues, relative to parking issues, you know, how many students have a car, none of them have a car, so this is, you know, two units.
I'm not making it about students, I mean, I can tell you that majority of the rental units in my area are not students anymore. And so there are different implications when you have that take place, in fact, the neighbors are saying, give us the students back any day. So then there's a change in dynamics, significant dynamics in my area, but when you have places like our society, the Westley even ministries and so forth, shipping off high-risk youth into these car files, to these units, renting by the day, the night, the week, whatever, creates a dynamic within the neighborhood that's breaking up the neighborhood, and we can ensure that we've got the proper balancing in it. Clearly, all I'm looking for is the ability to have landlords, in that case, in the small home housing, you have to be licensed, and if you're not licensed, you'll be fined, and it's not a difficult task to determine, the evidence determined rental housing has a lot easier than determining a boarding house. And so from an evidentiary point of view, I wouldn't have any problem, or a bylaw wouldn't have any problem, starting crossing charges on certain units throughout the neighborhoods. The landlords would have to comply before they would have to pay the price. So it's not about tenants in that case, it's about the landlords are taking advantage of those tenants. A lot of those times, those tenants won't complain until they actually leave with a beef.
I, I, we don't want this to be, you know, maybe we go back and talk about it. The issue is, if the tenant feels that by letting somebody in, they're going to lose their housing, they know it's not zoned for six people living in that unit that's going to get shut down, they lose their housing, but what's in it for them is pretty clear, I got to find new housing at a rate that I can't afford, so...
Marty, how many places have you, your staff have gone through, put orders in to comply for health and safety reasons, or whatever the issues are in the department? How many people have been displaced if we saw those actions?
None.
Thank you. I mean, I'm tired of hearing that argument, when the reality bare, pointed out in his head, and that's why I want to go on this working group, and I want to separate myth from fact, because everyone jumps to this automatic conclusion that people will be displaced. And yet, that's not the experience in City of Hamilton, and let's find out if that's the experience in other jurisdictions. You may be right, I'm not suggesting that, but I don't want to automatically assume...
I can tell you, aside from the process directly here, there are other processes that kick in that have led to displaced individuals. So, yeah, it's not remediable, I think, the main lines of...
I have a question.
Sorry, I'm making, Aaron.
Just at the point, we have this other package, I guess it's on this item two, and there's a bunch of clippings and stuff, and I'm, that's not numbered.
Are those the information pieces with the Hamilton Spectator article?
Yeah, so there's one about the 191, probably with a fire, two people died. There's a quote from a city spokesperson saying that the house has been recorded twice in an unlicensed rooming house, and the city had sent a bylaw officer to review this before times, and said that the landlord assured the city he's coming back to three tenants, which would put him clear for that bylaw. So I'm just confused, like, first of all, if he had been, if he definitely had stolen, I mean, those would have been three tenants that would have lost their housing, not that they should have been living there in the first place, but how would the licensing that's being proposed be different than that if the city did go in twice and stolen it, clean up their act, and they said, okay, we won't license you because you said you were going to do this? I'm just, I don't, I'm confused as to how we can enforce it on that, then, or is it aren't going to follow the rules, even though they've been told a bunch of times, and then it comes to a fire where people die, it's like...
Can I ask, I don't have to respond to that, because I, would be fair for me to respond to it.
With licensing, it allows us, we have more power with licensing, so under property standards, there's only so much we can do, we don't have to allow us it. Excuse me, with licensing, once the bylaw is in place, there is no stopping us, that gives us the authority to get inside to find out what's actually at hand. And, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just going back to Aaron's point about, well, we have a lodging home bylaw, that's a bylaw we have, this, in this case, that the person was running in it, illegal rooming house or lodging home, and, I mean, I'm not an expert in the bylaw enforcement, but I would think that that would be enough for the city to enforce those bylaws that we do have in place, to force him to do that, like, it looks, and I mean, this is just one quote, obviously, the situation is much more complicated than it is in this document, but if the city went in it, it sounds like they inspected twice, and they just took him on his word that he was going to comply, where's the follow-up on that, and is that this proposed bylaw going to have more teeth, so that the city can actually force themselves back in if they've inspected twice, to go back in to make sure that he's cleaning things up, or is registered as a rooming house and following that bylaw?
And here it references the fact that we indicated that he was coming back, so once you go in and you see that they're at the level that puts them within the correct amount under the bylaw, then they're now in scope.
So, okay, so that's, I wasn't sure if they had gone back and inspected and made sure that we had done.
So when they get back in, then they're in scope, and there's nothing we can do because they're following the bylaw. So of course, with regular inspections, then you can go in and see what's different, and in this case, between one inspection to another, things do change. And I mean, maybe that's something to look at as a part of the scope for the licensing of rental units, is one time, I think, once per year enough, and maybe that's something to look at, and I'm not sure really in terms of other municipalities, I know Waterloo's their, their view is a little bit more aggressive, but maybe it needs two inspections, so that if someone says there's ten units and there's so many people in there, and the parking is limited, that the next time we get in there, it's still the same, you're not waiting a whole year when tenants change, especially when it's students.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if we're going down this path, and going through the zoning and licensing and all that, that at the end of it, the conditions are actually better for the tenants, and we're not just creating a lot of hereafter seed, where we still have problems and unsafe conditions, because the apples aren't participating.
So I think we've had a lot of discussion on the evidentiary issue. Does somebody else have, Nigel and Mark Hall, is that your?
Well, yes.
Okay, well, sorry, I'll come back to my name.
Yeah, just to clarify, okay, designations of, in my area where I live, and mostly single-family, whatever that means anymore, but what are the other designations, if somebody puts an apartment in the basement, is there a designation specifically, does it become a multi-residential? I think this is the gap we've got, when people put in secondary units, I don't seem to see any designation for that. So people say, well, what am I limited? I thought I was living in a single-family community, now I'm in a multi-residential. But if there's lots of people limited, apparently it should be considered a lodging home. Is there anything that, any rules in Hamilton that says if you go from a single to two units, that that's a different designation and a different tax rate?
Commander, can you help a little?
Okay.
So provincial legislation around density, this is to grow Ontario, allow for secondary suites in almost any home, so that means by default, you can assume that just about any single-family home could have a secondary suite and be compliant, so that's one element of it, and that's the issue where we start to talk about the planning implications and density around that, that that would be another helpful beyond just the bylaw participation of staff, may be helpful to provide clarity, and there, the issue around getting, exceeding that number where it starts to hit the threshold for rooming houses, clearly defined by section within the city, but the secondary suites is an as-of-right opportunity for almost any, if not all, single-family homes in all Ontario.
If I'm correctly right, raw and raw, Marty or bylaw, is it three units is all you can rent out, and maybe a girl, a single-family unit?
Yes, any units, it's three units, yes.
It's three units in bylaw.
So, and it's a phraseology question, or a conversation where it becomes, you know, a little complicated, is, is a secondary suite mandate that home to be a duplex? Do three mandate it to be a triplex? The provincial legislation around a secondary suite doesn't call that home a duplex, it just calls it a secondary suite within a single-family home. So this is some of the planning conversations that we need to have some clarity around, because it doesn't solve Nigel's concern about, every house looks like a duplex in my world now, but it's a secondary suite.
So if it is considered a duplex, that's a different tax rate, is that correct? Different tax rate if it's considered a duplex?
It's a different property, it has two, it has two taxable properties, or two taxable addresses, where a secondary suite won't necessarily be either one, two, three, Main Street, A and B, I still want to three Main Street, I have a secondary suite, a granny suite, there's a million names to it, and that's the challenge, you know, is we get, it starts to get convoluted that way, and again, I'm trying to clarify, and the clarity is, it is a clear...
Rather, as a right, if they meet all the safety aspects, they could have a secondary unit, or a granny flat, by right.
Or a three?
No, one. On our own bylaw, you can have, you can rent up to three tenants in a single-family unit, three different tenants. After that, this is where it gets completely complex.
Is it, those ones are complex enough?
So my, my concept is, if you see a small apartment building, three stories, and it has a specific designation, it's taxed as such, and yet, somebody can do the same thing with a house and not pay the same taxes, as that person legitimately, with a three-story apartment building, is paying, you've got absentee landlords that come in, take over the houses, convert them, and they pay residential tax, single family, but they're putting a strain on the services, the schools, the parks and wrecked cars, pick-up, parking, you name it. And that's where the real problem is, outside of Wards One and Eight, although I know that happens in those, when I'm in Ward Six, so I see it every day. So, changing whole dynamics about me.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, uh, what did Paul then, was there?
So, Mr. Chair, I do have some concerns with the recommendation here. And I think I need to be clear to everyone around the table, first of all, that if there were no existing provincial legislation whatsoever involved in rental housing, I would be behind licensing 1,000%. I see it personally as a, as an unnecessary implication of the same means or, or rights that we're trying to duplicate. So, I see that, I just don't see the value in that. Again, reiterate, if there was no legislation to govern landlords, I would be behind this full stop. We have, and we've talked about this as far as costs, et cetera, we already have taxation problem in hand. And as far as ours, second is concerned, to the point where I can speak for ourselves, we have had to appeal every one of our tax assessments for our buildings for this current year because we have faced between a 20 and 35% increase in our taxes. Now, we're, we're not talking tall dollars, we're not talking, we're talking thousands of dollar difference. So, that has caused an enormous amount of workload for us to have to deal with. Secondly, we are also given a pittance allowable guideline increase of between 1.5 and 1.8% per year. So, in, in, if you combine the increase in taxation, combined with our maximum allowable guideline increases, we're very limited as to what we could potentially take on or, or what we cannot. So, we, we certainly don't want additional costs added on to these already burdensome costs that I just talked about. I, I am concerned about this report, because I feel the efforts of this committee, once again, are being steered down one path and one path only, without reaching consensus on other initiatives that we have discussed. I, I certainly cannot support considering hiring a, a full-time staff project manager. But I just cannot support a $60,000 cost for one path that we're going down. It doesn't seem to include any of the other items that we've discussed. Originally, this started out as a volunteer registry program. And sometimes now we're back into creating a file of licensing program. And that concerns me, it, it doesn't seem to include the other opinions and objections of others around the table. And, for that reason, I just can't support it. Thanks, Paul, there.
I just have a question about the comment that we've made that there's no displacement. So, if you go and inspect an illegal unit, and you don't have displacement, either the unit was legalized or the unit were in vacant, what kind of scenario is there? What has happened? How can you say there's no displacement? I just want some clarification on that.
Good work, Marty.
Well, there's, when there's no displacements, in terms of things that have happened in the past, they would go in to work with the owner of the house. In some cases, it could be something as, getting to a certificate of compliance on a lodging home where there's work that needs to be done. But they're working in conjunction with municipal law in order to meet the requirements that need to be done on the home to get it up to proper standards. But if, I'm sorry?
If they didn't comply with zoning, and you had illegal units, wouldn't that units have to be trimmed down?
If they're, if they're not in compliance with zoning, then, um, there's some cases where they try to apply community adjustments for, for different things, where that really displaces a body. And, thank you.
So, we've done other things, like, if it's student housing, we time an order so it's the end of the season and the students are not in. So, we don't, we don't have the powers to evict, but we try and work with the owners and timing our orders to, to make sure that nobody's displaced.
Okay, so, we're, we are turning a property that is housing seven people into one that will have us five people next semester?
Three.
Three?
Well, three would be a nice one, any, if it's a zoning.
So, we are reducing the number of people that can occupy properties in that area at all?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily, it's, uh, on a good case, if they're living independently in a house without a door, as a family, you can't restrict the size of the amount of people living in that, in that room. If it's a rooming house, that's different, then they have to come in compliance. So, the challenge is, are they a rooming house or are they living as a family? And that is determined through that due process. So, not necessarily are people being evicted because they need, maybe safety issues, or they might be leaving like a boarding house, and you say, look, you can't live like this because you're not meeting the zoning. But if you do X, Y, and Z, then you would be in compliance, you're not kicking anywhere.
So, that house, which has eight bedrooms with locks on it, will have the same number of people without locks on it next?
And one lease.
Right. So, how does that improve then?
That's why we want licensing, so we can go in and get building, uh, make sure building fire codes and all those things happen.
But you must be checking for the building and fire crews at the very least.
We can't get in, can't, can't get in.
But units that are being inspected, they must have.
Your answer, my point right now is that, Oshawa, Kingston, Waterloo, St. Catharines, it's like we're trying to invent something that doesn't exist anywhere. And that we, we automatically suspect that there's these huge pitfalls. And yet, city, uh, city's stronger than us, showing leadership, have showed leadership, and, and, and put these things in. And I haven't heard from social groups, organizations, I've done a lot of research and reading, that vindicated a huge displacement. I've heard that there's safer housing in those communities now. So, to us, it's like the boogeyman, and I don't know why I ask the boogeyman when, when, if it, and that's why I wanted to lead, uh, the, the working group and do the, the research. Maybe, maybe there's something I'm not aware of, but this is the best way to do it. But let's go down the road, let's do our research, let's do our due diligence, let's look at the experience of other stakeholders in other communities, bring that back, and we either agree or disagree on, on a go-forward basis. But let's not presume something, presume something what it seems to be working in other locations.
Maybe we just have different, uh, processes here.
But maybe you might be proven right, if we, we'll have to get down that road to determine that. We're not there yet.
Um, so, when staff were talking about the, the report when we were at, throwing around, whether we were looking at under six units or more than, and staff indicated that the scope was still open. Is it, in terms of this, this six-month staff position, is it, is there some flexibility to have them also go back into all these reports that were done years ago on the different models that, that Paul was talking about? And make that part of their report back as well? So, it's not just focusing on, on feasibility of licensing awards one and eight for six units and under? Whether that's the main bulk of the work? Is it possible that we direct staff to also include some other research in that? So that if the feasibility shows that it's not feasible, that we're starting back at, at square one, that we've also had other research happening along the way? And Councilor, I think you may have mentioned to this steering group or a working group. I'm, I'm not sure whether it falls in the agenda, but that, maybe they could work alongside this staff position to help inform some of that research as well. So that, at the end of six months, that we have a lot, much broader understanding of what the issues in the community are. And maybe a number of solutions that could work hand-in-hand, so that if licensing doesn't work for those ones who really just take the locks off the doors, and it's a family, and, and whatever, that there are other, other avenues that we can use. Whether it be education for, for landlords and tenants, or some of the zoning issues that we've looked at, maybe those can go hand-in-hand along with, with the licensing, if it proves to be a good option. Is that an opportunity that we have?
So, what's your, what's the scope that you're suggesting?
Um, I don't know if I'd be the one that, I don't exactly know what it is. But I think Paul had lined up, we've done some other research around, like, section 18, and making those secondary suites more easily developed inside of stock, or make them legalized, so that we aren't losing units that we have already. So, we don't get that same pressure on the rental housing stock. If, if licensing comes in and, and property owners decide to de-convert their properties, so that they're no longer halting those units. Involving some of the other, other suggestions, I mean, this committee's heard a bunch of them. I don't know how they're all on the top of my head, but I'm sure around the table, a number of.
So, so, I've already offered all of the open for business on streamlining and the right of, uh, you know, streamlining the process to come into compliance. Streamlining the product, and also looking at, we talked about grandfathering a period of time, so that through inspection, if somebody's in violation, there's a grandfather, a period, a period of grace, have them come into compliance. So, that to me was a sort of separate process on the billing, because it is a billing code issue. It's a billing, a planning and zoning issue, that we would have to work through the billing department. Bylaw only, of course, is what the bylaws are on the books. This would be a little bit outside of that process. So, we did talk about a, a screen to work on, on that, hope Paul, I need to come out with further talk, because I was looking forward to the actual resolution.
So, is it that understanding that that issue around the zoning of these secondary units is going to be looked at as open, open for business? I just don't want it to get lost in the shuffle, because I, as far as I'm concerned, that's one of the biggest issues that the city faces.
I agree, I don't see it as a bylaw issue, I see it as a zoning and planning issue. So, uh, we'll work with Jason Thorne and Paul, and I'll work on a separate screen and bring back reports to this committee on what, what action can take place.
Great, so, then, one of the other things, apart from the, the licensing, would be the voluntary registry? Is that part of the scope too, to look at, compare it over the two projects?
Bob, go ahead.
Sorry, so, um, it will, it can be whatever you direct it to be. So, I'm hoping that we can get some direction on that, just to make sure that when we do come back, we come back with a product that you can be satisfied with.
Yeah, Anthony, in my, my humble opinion, anyone that supports a voluntary registry is being collectively dishonest. Because it is a piece of paper that's sitting on a wall, and there to look at and not achieve a thing. We, we went through the lobby, volunteer registry, we had three people register on it. Now, we have a lobby registry, and you take a look at what's on there now. Big difference when there's compliance issues versus voluntary. And the only people that would volunteer on, on, on a registry would be the good landlords, not the ones that cause the problems. So, I've already very publicly spoken on the fact that I don't want to waste the papers written on when it comes to the volunteer registry. I, to me, that was, I, it was almost like, let's just get this over with and walk out, let's say we achieved something. I don't think that's what the general public expects us to achieve.
So, Mr. Chair, can I just respond for Doug Taylor, who may have been saying my issue with this recommendation is not, that I'm clearly opposed to it. I just think it's too narrowly focused. And it is kind of premature, but I do believe there's work to be done still within our working group. So, I think this is coming ahead of that, which you should be aware of. And just, I think the whole recommendation needs to be a little more broad to include some of what people have been discussing around the table. Because it is all part and parcel, cannot be dealt with just on individual paths, if you want to call it.
So, I, I agree with Paul, and I, I was thinking, I'm just looking for consensus. I'm, I'm okay with tabling what is here before us today, in regards to staff recommendation. Because I'm looking forward to getting a working group together and actually doing true, real fact-finding. I bring that information back to help inform, uh, any further recommendations and follow-up by staff. So, I think that, to me, would be the priority. I'm tired of hearing myths, or scarabombing, or, or all those issues. And maybe there's a real reality to it, I don't know. But the problem, it's not what I'm hearing, my talk with communities, and maybe I'm talking to the wrong people. But I think we have all stakeholders that have an interest, whether from a landlord's perspective, or a social housing perspective, or a social justice perspective, or certainly at, at, uh, a planning perspective, all part of this working group, attend and ask the same stakeholders, the same questions that, you know, that align with their interests, and have a clear understanding of what the true implications have been. Then we've got something better to work with. Because right now, we, we're just taking staffs as, we're going to displace people, we're going to cause the fortune. And then, I'm, I'm just pointing, but, but this is not real. Because I've been talking to these other cities, and that's not what's happening. So, I think it's time to do a road trip, and let's put, let's get the reality on paper, work on it now. So, I would prepare, I'd be looking for motion then to, uh, table this particular report with a direction to staff, uh, to identify, uh, three communities for a working group to attend, to meet with, uh, you know, the implementers of the program, with the, uh, the real estate division. Like, you know, the real estate brokers are, let's make sure each stakeholder represents, social, homeless, housing, people. Am I missing any categories? Students, uh, uh, university student association represents. So, we could have a roundtable discussion in each of those communities with the same type of counterparts we have at this table, so we can get a better understanding of the implications where, after, the implications, implementation, sorry.
Would that not have been a part of the scope of the work done by the individual as brought forward in the report today?
It would, but I think the, I, I get a sense, and get, come along, that people feel more comfortable about doing that piece first, and then plugging that into that person to, you know, because there'd be a lot more work for that person to do other than that.
I just asked for some clarification on doing that first. So, it will be a recommendation for staff to put that together in order for us to go on that road trip?
You're going on a road trip identifying three communities that have a licensing bylaws in place. Uh, and we'll try and have each stakeholder represented at each of those communities to respond to, uh, represent the, the working group, so we can obtain the information, bring back forth, as for your broader group. Is that clear?
It's, it's very clear. And just further to our previous meeting that we had here, there were some issues in terms of having someone get this off the ground or get it going at the room.
Coordinate it all?
Yeah.
Yeah, so here's the issue staff are bringing forward, is that they don't have the resources actually even to coordinate all this. And who idea was, for that six months, they found the money within their, their, their own budgets, to have a project manager help facilitate gathering all the information. The reason why they're looking for the approval of this report by the individual, is that they can facilitate the working group, facilitate those meetings, facilitate, because that is time, that's hours more than above the work that they currently do. So, I would, thank you for the clarification. So, we do need resources, and we supported this, uh, report. It is all, it, all it's doing is providing us the resources to do the things we need to do. That's, so it's what I could look forward to, by the sounds of it.
And I'm sorry, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, I hear you.
I think we're all saying the same thing. I think where we're, we're tripping up is, is licensing of rental units as, as a subject area. When the summary is pretty clear, it, it certainly reiterates exactly what you said. We're gonna go and figure out what this looks like in communities that may, or may not lead to, to rental licensing. But, but I think, I think Paul's concern is, is that we're leaping to the licensing as the end result, as opposed to the, what are we trying to accomplish? So, maybe the subject matter is, um, reviewing of rental licensing with no expectation of if we needed to license or not license. That may be, that may be the logical outcome based on the communities we go and visit. But that seems to be the tripping point. I think we agree collectively on what we want to do. We want to get good information as to ways that this is going to work in our community. And we need resources, and the city has been kind enough to come up with a way to resource this, to do that hard research. We, we want that to happen. Collectively, this community, or this committee, has said that all along. We just, we're just kind of hung up on the semantics of, of, of what we're doing.
Yeah, like.
So, any mild change would, would allow us?
Let's be clear on what the report says, though. It says, prepare feasibility framework, or pilot project for licensing rental housing, words one, eight. So, it's a feasibility piece. So, what it's doing is going out there and exploring and seeing if it may not make sense. That's what feasibility does. Correct?
But if we, we want to do a feasibility around the realities of rental housing.
Correct.
Not necessarily the realities of licensing rental housing, just the realities of rental housing, and what does that lead to in a displacement in a non-licensed, uh, community and a licensed community? It's just, if we, if we say we're gonna be six feet tall, somehow we're gonna be six feet tall, we just change where, how we, where we start to take measure. So, so if we take that element of it out, and we can still accomplish the same thing, it may get there.
The issue is not feasibility of rental housing. The issue here, though, I want to be clear, right, and that's my job. And that's my job as a chair, is the feasibility of dealing with rental housing. Because, I mean, you can't just say feasibility of rental housing. I mean, we don't plan rental housing, so I don't think that's an issue. The question is, how do we deal with the issues of rental housing?
We had some handle, and I was wondering.
Yeah.
Because that's a basic regulation use of other communities. And we capture licensing and/or other alternatives.
How about feasibility of all actions taken in respect to rental housing?
Again, we're agreeing to the same thing, it's just the semantics that yet have a universal endorsement of, that's the challenge, and, and we just have to, I mean, and I don't want to spend any more time wordsmithing this thing to death. Staff have done a great job on figuring out what they think we want and they want to do what we want them to do. We just can't get hung up on.
I thought you must be chair, you only suggested something.
Assessments.
Very sound, you know, those.
Letters.
Be reasonable for us, letters. Did you have a copy?
I did, sorry. Um, it, it, it actually says, prepare the feasibility framework. And if this, that feasibility framework is a catch-all for anything you can decide at this table, give us some direction. It's this body to focus on making things happen in accordance to what you're looking for. So if you have some idea, we talked about up to 20 units, we want to look at the displacement, if we can put that all into something right here, right now and decide that this body, we can go ahead and hire the body in order to get this preliminary work done to help come up with some decisions to help this table. Does that make sense?
Could that help Paul?
It does, we just need to know, apart from amendment and the recommendations, that you already made the last.
All actions taken?
All actions or re, uh, forms of regulation in other communities.
All actions in.
I don't mind, that's fairly all encompassing. I think we'll make your point back.
Very.
Just for the record, I'm quite happy with what staff has proposed, I don't see any need to change anything.
Okay, so we do have a report in front of us. We are suggesting some wordsmithing, um, in the report. Nigel likes the report the way it is, so can I just have a straw vote, how many feel comfortable with where it's at? Just a straw vote, because, so only three? Okay, so with the, with the wordsmithing, how many people are comfortable with it?
There will be a word spoken.
Okay, the wordsmithing would be all, all regulatory actions that do address rental housing, basically looking at all, all forms of, of action.
Yes, right.
I, I think our, I think we like the way it is right now. The wordsmithing is not our, our issue. I think what we're, what we're just a little concerned about is again, the words wanting to be, and I know you mentioned financial constraints. Um, I think when words two and three you see here are a, a fair deal, um, and would, I don't know if that's due to like, councilor not being here and maybe not being on the community, and so it's just never been brought up. But, um, I think if, I think including other words, or at least including the potential for other words, if we find that that's within our, um, within feasible or reasonable.
So we could put, as a wordsmith, one, one and eight, not excluding, uh, other words to be considered?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we can figure out the wordsmithing on, or Paul and, Larry? Is that okay?
Yeah, just if it's going to be a motion, it might could be a, or, you know, or it's a motion or be.
It's wordsmithing, of course, we're changing it from, um, can't see what's changing right here? John?
I'm sorry, yes.
We're changing from the word, excuse me, feasibility framework, is that what we're changing? Uh, for licensing rental housing?
To all regulatory action?
Correct. Is that fine?
So we remove feasibility framework for a pilot project? Remove all of that to all regulatory action, or we need pilot project?
Oh, we're still keeping pilot project, we're not, but we're not restricting specific to licensing.
Okay.
Would you change that to regulate one?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah, we're going to use that, yeah.
Any and all of the, of the regulations. Something on that line, so we can.
Okay. Do we, so I need a mover, second or third? Goodbye Larry, second by John, all is in favor?
Carrie.
I think all is carried, thank you. Great discussion. And we're at eight point two. And that is. That is, how respectful are, are respecting students' rental housing? This next item comes from Nigel Warren. Is this the commercial taxation of the home?
Yeah.
Do you want to, Nigel, do you want to go up here for it?
Yeah, this, this article was in respect to the date of the 21st, and the columnist was writing about needing to make an investment and she decided to buy up five properties. I don't know if it was five properties all at once or one at a time for five years. But anyway, she went on to explain all the hardships of being a student property, wanting to, for student housing. And my question that just jumped off the page at me was, did she go and, did she apply for rezon? Did she get any inspections done? Because some of the comments in there appears that, you know, uh, some of the units won't rent, she says, which means it's time for rentals. So, you know, is she, did she get into this looking for a way to make money and, to follow the proper steps? I don't know, but it seemed to me if you take on five properties, the likelihood, if you came to the city and said, I want to convert these five properties, or if they're already existing, not compliant, then it just gets right to the heart of how it happens. They just say, oh, that sounds like a good idea, I can make some money. Let's, uh, let's inconvenience all the neighbors, but we can make money or not. She points out it's, but she is making money because the property values in, in most cases are going up just because of the market we're in. But anyway, that is why it was a little concerning for me. The other thing is, she's running a business. But she's not, she's not permitted to run a business.
Yeah, I think the issue, we've looked into this, and I actually wrote the, the regu, uh, Canadian regulatory agency to look into it as well. And I don't think they've got responses, but I have landlords that own 27 houses in a neighborhood in my area, so that's not a commercial operation, I don't know what it is. They should be taxed at a different rate. I think they should be, because they're, you know, clearly they're not buying houses to, 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 out of generosity and, uh, 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 give, provide more housing for people. They're generating a wealth for themselves, which is nothing wrong with that, I have no problem with that. But they're being taxed at the same rate as the average individual in each of these homes, I think that's the portion of it. But, uh, we did do a response on CRA a number, what I wrote, both five years, six years ago, and, uh, and basically they're, whatever it's owned, whatever it's owned, that's basically how it'll happen.
Um, just to clarify, on that issue, the, the taxation on the property shouldn't be an issue because that tax just gets passed on to both tenants, that's an up clear, up down. People who have 27 houses are getting taxed and paying income tax on any of that. So it's, it's a difference, they're running a business and they're making, if they are making income, they're paying tax on it, and that's what CRA would come in. But as far as the property tax rate, we shouldn't be advocating to increase it more, because that's one of the clear, uh, rate increases that is impossible, and so that is just going right onto the, to the backs of the fence. So I would just be cautious about.
Well, I, I know for a fact with CRA, I did file a complaint with a landlord, and he didn't file, he was not filing his income tax based on 27.
And so that's where it should be going, is that direction.
And they, they did, went in and did an audit on them. But the problem is, is that a lot of times these aren't reported until you go to CRA, so you have to get the CRA, and they will, they will investigate.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I support that, it's just the, the property tax piece of that, you have to be cautious because that's too.
I agree.
Just, uh, just as a follow-up, there was an article by the same person in the last week, where she talked about her impact assessment. And the point of the act, Collins, that caught my attention was, um, she got somebody to come and visit her own house. And I think the black mold deliberately speckling the ceiling and windows made a particularly good, strong impression, and she managed, and that the relative crappiness of the house necessitated a downgrade in its value. Nice comment, so.
That was it.
I wonder what the five student voices look like.
So, uh, we need to receive eight point one, Nigel, second.
Eight point two.
My public call is in favor, Carrie. Uh, we also have eight point three, the secondary suites and the addresses support allow me, and I'm a big, uh, big, big supporter of, uh, secondary suites, so I don't want to be in the process, Paul, I'm sure, I have services that will happen. And then compliance, and, uh, and even people that are outside the law currently, find a way to get them to compliance without, so that's like race period. That's what I want to work on with planning and so forth, because really outside the law. And we'll, and we'll work, I promise you, we'll work on that. Uh, any comments on eight point three? So I need to receive, move and second. The last thing is, we didn't set up the working group. And I don't want, I don't think the working group should be too cumbersome. Uh, so I'm going to make some suggestions on the, and, and I hope I can get consensus on this, I can do the best I can. I'd like, I love, I love to have Erin there, of course, from, uh, from the Heart Association. I love to have Renee there, uh, from the Social Services, Social Housing Aspect, Social Climate Research, uh, Group. Uh, I'd love to have a tenant there, so, uh, they got Nigel, is there any other tenants here? Uh, John, so either John or Nigel, and probably one individual from a lawyer, from housing or from whoever.
Would you entertain, uh, could that committee entertain somebody non, could we be the tenant for non, maybe, or do they have to be a member?
They have to be a member of this committee. Yeah, yeah. So I'm just trying to get a cross-section, uh, if I'm off on the wrong track, you know, some of the real estate division.
No, I was going to say one of the students, or one of the universities.
Right.
I think I have two.
Right, so what is Ryan or Stephanie? So, I need for, for, to write it down now, so, it says Ryan or Stephanie?
That will be.
So Ryan, Michael, you okay with it?
Yes. I'm okay with this.
Nigel, you okay with it? Or John, look at, Michael, Nigel, do it, is that okay, John? Uh, Erin? Renee? Probably Eden Johnson? You? Okay, Doug Conley? I'm sure he probably wants to. Uh, anyone else? Am I missing anyone?
I would certainly volunteer.
So you're done?
Yeah.
I asked why you're not. I asked why you don't consent to the meeting, so I, and I think the best way to do is, we're all working the same setup.
Is it John, you're in? Aiden?
No, it's, uh, I mean, Aiden's not here, so if he wants to, I mean, I agree. So we'll get that, uh, court date with staff and then be able to report, uh, findings before the next, uh, so here's the time, that's going to happen before the next rental meeting. Those, those road trips and then, and the findings will come back to that next rental meeting to form, I believe it's a greater volume here, okay? So everyone finding the, the representation?
Do we, do we ever take the next meeting or?
We're looking at that, but we might want not lock in that, because we don't know timing wise, will we get set this working group?
There's, there's work done.
Yeah, all is in favor of working group? All is, both, Carrie?
Um, Mr. Chairman, when the working group has got some details done, prior to the next meeting, will we see some of that work in peace to be written?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So we will, will in advance.
Absolutely. We'll have, we'll hopefully, I'm hoping to have it sent out to every member, I sort of a briefing sheet.
Yeah.
Uh, who we met with, the nature of the discussions, A, B, C, E, and so forth, and we all have the answer to the discussion.
So include prior to the meeting?
That's my hope. Okay, I promise, but that's, it's my.
So who's going to facilitate getting this group together and then, and what's the next meeting?
Doug, it's, well, we're, we're, we're hard, we've got money authorized, so, uh, does it involve that person?
By self conjunction with that individual, they will take the lead and get this all together.
So I'll find three, uh, cities, of course, we'll do, and then we'll make sure we've got appropriate representation to meet with. When we get there, I want to make sure that all our counterparts are at the table so that they can conform us.
Is there that question about?
Okay. Paul should do a journey?
I'm not there anymore.
Second, all is in favor of Carrie. Thanks for Ryan, the next step.